Today's Wednesday, July 27, 2016. It's 10:05. I called the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag? Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We have 61 exoneration listings this morning for $23,087.90 minutes from the meeting and work session of June the 15th and June the 22nd, 2016. General County vouchers, $518, $201.05, Cole Severance, $7,500, 911, $741.97, Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,500, Camp Muffley, $3455.09, Mason Dixon Park, $387.36, reallocated coal, $1,800, Sutter's valuation, $1858.32. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $13,345.11, 911, $243.94, home confinement, $7920.14, Chestnut Ridge Park, $317.15, Camp Muffley, $283.03, Sutter's valuation, $144.76, for a total of $557, $697, and $92. We have a couple budget revisions. We received $10,000 from the Marion County Commission for the locks and dam, for operations of the locks and dam. So we'll be increasing miscellaneous revenue and increasing the locks and dam light item, $720. And then also prosecuting attorney received a check in amount of $2,862.90 from the Mon Metro Drug Task Force as far as their 10% reimbursement or forfeiture funds for the prosecutor's office. So we have two budget revisions. We also have boards and authorities, Camp Muffley, Chestnut Ridge Park, Mason Dixon Park advisory boards, one for the development authority, planning commission, solid waste authority, and I think that's it. Development authority, I think I said that one, development authority. That's all we have. Our fiduciary matters. I'm missing my second page, so I don't...
Go ahead.
Okay. Georgia Armstead.
Okay. What's the wishes of the commission?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. We have introduction of new employees. Sheriff, I know we have. He's up front. Sorry, Bobby.
I told him you ought to stay back there because I was going first.
You were set, huh? Thank you.
Introduce.
I think they're out of order.
Morgana's, mine's never out of order. This morning, we'd like to introduce two prospective new employees. The first is Thomas Burner. Tom is a retiree from the Federal Bureau of Prisons, and he was looking for a part-time job, and as luck would have it, we had one open. So we would like to employ Tom at a salary of $1088 per hour, part-time civil process server with a probationary period of six months. And of course, by virtue of being a part-time position, there would be no benefits available to him. And on here it has, we wanted to make it effective July 28, but we're actually changing both of these to August 1. The second is Jared Laney. Jared is, we're looking to hire him as a part-time process transport officer. We've had an opening there for a while, and luckily Jared was looking for a part-time job. He's a pretty good-sized guy, tells me to take care of himself, so doesn't need me to do anything for him. But we wanted to start Jared at a salary also of $1088 per hour, part-time process transport, six months probation, no benefits eligibility, and we would also want to start him on August 28.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
I think both those guys can take care of themselves. Okay. Bobby, Mr. Doyle, your turn.
I will chair, sit down. I was before him.
He was standing right in my face there. I couldn't help it.
Just got to get him, you take him first. Yeah, whatever. We're here today to introduce and get your permission to add Carl Neely to our maintenance staff. Carl will be working with the maintenance on a day-to-day basis, plus he'll be working with the construction crew when needed. He's from Morgantown here, and he's a carpenter by trade, and he will be full-time with benefits starting August 1.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Construction crew has saved a lot of money, so...
I do know this gentleman.
Say another carpenter on.
And this was the one we talked about, sort of put another person on for the parks that we can do the work that you're...
That's good.
There's no other place to save a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Nice to have you. Do we have any other induction, introduction of new employees? None, we'll move right on. Okay. There's periods of comments from the public. Any statement you wish to make is, please just rise, identify yourself, and you will have the floor. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Travis Hennile with Major Morgantown. My purpose in coming before you today is to revisit some permissions you gave over a year ago for the placement of a wayfinding sign to be placed in front of the Justice Building in the last planter on the corner of Foundry and High Streets. And I have the rendering here. As my understanding, the commission has given previous approval for this, is my intention to reaffirm that with you today so that we can move forward with placement of this sign. Our intention is to promote greater connectivity between the Whorf District and our downtown three-way finding signage. This is just one of several that we're looking to do. This is the first we'd like to place. The rendering is inaccurate on the Whorf District. The arrow should be to the right, but we will mitigate that. But you can see from the picture of the placement, and as I said, as my understanding that the commission did give its approval before we moved forward with this, I did want to reaffirm that approval. Being the new guy, I want to make sure everything is straight before. We have submitted the requisite permits, signage permits, to the city for the sign, so that's in process.
It was approved previously, so I guess the question is, does either commissioner have any reason to want to revisit this? Just confirmation's a confirmation.
Very good.
Well, we appreciate you coming in and finding out before you rested the sign.
Always check my, you know, dot my i's, cross my t's, absolutely.
That's right. Travis, you're doing a good job. He's new here, but he's everyplace, and you're working real hard. Nice to have you with us.
Appreciate it very much.
Come back anytime if you want to reconfirm anything you want.
I may do that.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Here in none, I will clear the comments from the public completed. Colleen Coon, grants. Morning, Colleen.
Hi. I have two requests for reimbursement. One is for the JJDP grant in the amount of $1,731.37. And then I also have one for the Community Development Block grant in the amount of
What's the wishes of the commission?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And there was also a request for reimbursement that I forgot last week for the Day Report Center grant in the amount of $17,831.39 that I signed due to deadlines.
I have a motion to confirm her signature.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay. We're about seven minutes early.
Yeah.
Can't really start that early. Probably everyone's here, but I'm not allowed to start that early. The other one's objections filed to Anial County. And the fourth one's also petition to appoint the sheriff as administrative, 10:45. Let's move on down to correspondence for right now. What do we have in correspondence, haven't we?
Nothing.
That was pre...
Okay. Nothing in correspondence. What do we have in unfinished business?
This is summer.
Nothing. We finished it all, right? Uh-huh.
Guess we'll have fun.
Moving right on down. New business. Well, that's going to take too long. I don't want to start that with revision.
Yeah.
Reports from elected officials.
Sheriff, you have anything further for us? You like Janby, I've just got one thing.
How's that?
Like I used to say that all the time, one thing. I know a lot of times as elected officials, we don't get acknowledged for the good things that we do, and I just wanted to tell the commissioners on behalf of the sheriff's office employees, tax office employees, that we appreciate the recent raise that you all approved for all the employees. I know that without our employees, we have nothing, and they do a good job, and I personally appreciate the thought that you all gave to giving them increases in their salaries, and they certainly do deserve it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie, do you have anything?
Thank you.
I think Kelly's telling you you forgot something, Sheriff.
Oh, the settlement. Ah, I didn't know she was going to make it.
No, it's her fault.
The settlement has been completed for the reconciliation of cash on hand and for the county, so just wanted to present the settlement to you. Everything is always, Kelly and her staff do a wonderful job in the tax office, so everything did come out as we expected, and everything has bounced.
Very good. All right. Is any other... Oh, Dot is here. Nice to have you. Do you have any words of wisdom from us, from you, or from the governor's office?
No, not responding, but I'm happy to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one issue, Kelly, don't we? You were brought up last week, the sheriff, that we needed to come up with a proposal for officially make the levy distribution methods, and fortunately, Renetta reminded us, and I didn't know if you wanted to read. It's just the process, the official process so that people know, and then it's in the record.
Okay. I'll be happy to read it.
Yeah, since we had discussed that last.
Basically, because the entities are kind of different in the way the levies are, both the transit and the library are sort of one central revenue and expenditure group, so we treated them in a fashion, the fire, in one, they're basically all being treated the same, only the way the distribution and the accounting will go will be based on the way the levy's set up. The library levy, the sheriff will distribute directly to the Morgantown Public Library on a monthly basis. Financial statements are required on an annual basis. Transit levy, the sheriff will distribute directly to Mountain Line Transit on a monthly basis. Financial statements are required on an annual basis. So we're going to put in the requirement an annual, but they do monthlies, which they said they will send over, so that's helpful. Fire levy, the sheriff will distribute directly to a special revenue fund established for the fire levy on a monthly basis. The county commission will request a check from the county clerk on a quarterly basis for each of the 12 fire departments, Mon County Fire Companies Association hazardous incident response team, and the Forest Fire Team per the schedule provided. Financials will be required after the first quarterly distribution. Subsequent quarters will not be distributed if the volunteer fire department or other entity is delinquent on their submission of financial documents per the schedule provided. Park Trails Recreation Levy, the sheriff will distribute directly to a special revenue fund on a monthly basis that is established for the levy. The county commission will request a check from the county clerk on a quarterly basis for each entity named in the levy order based on the calculated percentage. Annual finance reports are required for Bow Park City Westover New Soccer Association. What about, I thought Mon's Trails got some money, too.
MRTC?
Yeah.
They will get it on a quarterly basis. Is it not on there?
It's not on there.
Okay. They would also be, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. MRTC would be done the same exact way.
Yeah.
And just for clarification...
Add them to the list on both ends.
Yeah. For clarification for the public, we met in work session to discuss this, and then all parties were informed and approved it, so this wasn't just something we just did. Everyone worked together, and that, this is the final result, so I want that cleared.
Yeah, it was a consensus agreement.
Yes.
Also, and I represented this, it's going to be part of my report, but I'll go ahead and do it because we've got a couple minutes, and it relates to this. As, matter of fact, I think it was also mentioned in the work session, the fire associations or any other associations that is receiving distributions other than a monthly basis, if they have payments due or certain revenue requirements that would not be, that can't cover at this time, because the first check on the quarterly would go, let's see what, October?
Yeah, October 15.
October 15. 15th or whatever, October 15, that they can come see us, and we would consider different ways to assist them. The one that was mentioned with our last meeting with the fire association, the department in question was able to fund that payment that was due September 1 in another fashion, so they were able to take care of that. But just as general, if anyone has a problem, that just come see us. We try to work with everybody.
Okay. Should I, do I make a motion on that? Yeah.
That we adopt this procedure.
And then we will hand out the information to the people.
Second.
With the amendment of MRTC.
Yes, with the amendment of MRTC.
Second.
I have a motion and second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. Renetta, thank you for getting all the details on it.
If you could have Colleen add MRTC, then it'd be ready for distribution.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We spent the time to get down to 10:25.
I've never seen this many lawyers in one room at one time. This scares me.
Sheriff's got one more thing?
One more thing.
I was doing fine until Kelly keeps handing me papers. Just for y'all's information, public's information, I just want to give you an update on the tax collections from online payments. We have collected $3,102,166.37 in a form of $6,847 online payments. So that's a pretty impressive number. One thing that we do want to remind everybody about, and we did have an article put in the newspaper about this, that we are no longer accepting e-checks because we can't guarantee those funds are on hand when folks submit those payments, so we are taking credit cards only now. Well, I shouldn't say credit cards only. We're taking still checks and everything in the office.
You take cash, too? You accept cash?
We'll accept cash, sure, if you want to bring yours in cash. Whatever adds up, we'll take it.
All right. Okay. This is the 10:25 petition to remove the executor of the Edgar Allan Haynes estate. Let's start out, I always like to start out by figuring out who's who. Let's start with the attorneys. Who's who on the...
I'm Tom Kupac. I'm representing Sheriff Blue, who brought the petition on for the hearing today.
Okay. You want to, you can take the chair up here at the table.
Sure.
You're the petitioner. Who else is represented here?
David Strappus on behalf of Larry Haynes.
Larry Haynes, and he is the...
He is the executor.
Dave, if you'd come on up and have a chair. Also, we might have to get a couple more chairs.
Haley Hillen for the remaining heirs.
And you're for everyone else, at all. Okay. Let's see if we can't get him another chair. Is there, is there anyone, is there any, she said "at all," so I guess that's "at all," but is there any other party of interest in here that we need to identify for the record? Okay. So just to clarify, all interested parties are represented by attorneys. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So that makes it easier, because sometimes I have two or three people that aren't represented, so I got to give them equal opportunity. So what we'll do is we'll start with the petitioner, and then either one of you, if you want to continue afterward. Mr. Kupac.
Yes, sir. We're here today to ask that the, my client, Sheriff Blue, who was named as the executor in place of the executor who is now acting as executor, be appointed executor in place of Mr. Haynes. We have, this matter has been before the court, before the commission before, and was put on hold, hoping that some things would be resolved. We are asking for the removal of Mr. Haynes based upon a number of factors. The first one, of course, is Edgar Allan Hayes died almost two years ago. The estate has not been resolved. The estate is $750-some thousand. No distributions have been made, even though it says distributions already made promptly. But more importantly is that Mr. Haynes has used the funds of the estate to his own personal benefit. He has made numerous improvements to various pieces of property that were owned by all the heirs and not part, should not have been spent as part of the estate, and hired himself to do them. So instead of spending money on doing what he's supposed to do, he's hiring himself as a contractor to do work that is not authorized either under the estate or under the wishes of the heirs of the estate. He sold a vehicle for $4,500 when the value was placed at $8,000, and no explanation was given. He sold a boat for $1,500, and no explanation was given, does not account for the status of the remaining personal property, did not, said there's $64,000 in the account, but did not list where that money came from. He made expenses to repair an automobile or a vehicle of some sort. He spent $1,500 for carpet for the lake house, $10,000 for material on lake house repairs, dump fees, house repairs, $32,000 house repairs, $25,000, $5,000 dumping and hauling labor, none of which is justifiable under the estate, and all of which were to the benefit of Larry Haynes and not the estate of Edgar Allan Haynes. So therefore, we request that he be removed, do an accounting, and that my client take over as the execrix of the estate.
Thank you, Mr. Kupac. I probably slipped up on this. Could you identify your clients?
Sheriff Blue.
Are they present?
Yes.
Yeah, she's here.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Do you identify your clients?
Yes, Your Honor. We have Tony Moore, Heather Kearns, who is the daughter of a deceased beneficiary.
Raise your hand or something. Are they present?
I don't believe they are present today.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Heather Kearns is the daughter of the late Mary Jane O'Neill, who was an original beneficiary, Mr. John Catharineau, Ms. Joanne Nagy, and John Marvin Haynes.
David.
Larry Haynes, who's seated right here. He is present.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Who wants to go first in response? Do you dare?
Our response, since he's making these allegations against our client, we basically disagree with everything he said. We were in here three or four months ago, as you remember, when the petition was filed, and this matter was, the fiduciary commission, we're supposed to, there's supposed to be a hearing scheduled, I'm afraid, and her, we filed a response, probably 60 pages at least, documenting everything that has occurred, filed an annual accounting, and there were disputes on it. Josh Rogers, who represents most of the heirs and had told the fiduciary commissioner, instead of scheduling that hearing, and had stated in her interim report that she filed last week, that he was going to refer this matter to circuit court, file something in circuit court, so it could be all heard at one time, and that's where we were, we thought was going to happen. Mr. Kupac...
Excuse me. Didn't he also represent that to us in our last commission meeting?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
And in the report filed by the fiduciary commissioner, she acknowledged that and also stated that Mr. Kupac said the same thing. And then Ms. Blue filed this handwritten, pro se, four-page petition a few weeks ago, re- alleging basically everything that we talked about a long time ago. And based upon that, the fiduciary commissioner just filed an interim report saying he should be removed. Never had a hearing. We disagree with these matters. These things, the estate has been progressing. A piece of property was sold and closed on in June. All the heirs signed off on it. The money's being held in escrow. There's an escrow agreement. Attorney Carl Cather's holding that. Another piece of property was close to closing, and nothing's happened yet, but the same situation will occur. Money will be held in escrow. There are numerous questions, objections, that we've responded to in writing. We don't have time, but we'd be here for a couple days to go over everything. If that's what you want to do, that's no problem. And we are asking that this matter, you know, that this request not be granted, that Larry fulfill his duties. The fiduciary commissioner could have a hearing. We've been waiting on that, and Amy can respond, but Josh said yesterday that he's still, by email, I know he's on vacation, he sent me an email, and he said that he still was intending to have circuit court have something scheduled so we could have this thing resolved all at one time. We have no problem with that. We just want it resolved.
Yeah, I think they have.
Yes, Your Honor, we just, we don't oppose Mr. Haynes' removal, but like Mr. Shatt has said, we just were intending on filing a lawsuit in Circuit Court to resolve all of the issues that my client has with Mr. Haynes.
We have fiduciary commissioners, so we don't spend two or three days sitting here.
And if the fiduciary commissioner has made a recommendation to remove Mr. Haynes as the executor of this?
Based on what?
We have asked that she?
Stop, 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 stop! I heard you. I read the documents. Okay, I know what she said, I got the response, I know the history, okay?
If I could just make one statement, please, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
What happened is exactly what has been portrayed. It was represented to me by Mr. Rogers that he was in fact going to file an action in the Circuit Court of Long County. We agreed that I would be joined, my client would be joined as a party plaintiff. We have been waiting for that to happen for four months. I talked to Josh, and I know he's not here to just, yeah, but I talked to him about a month ago, and said, hey, you know, we're getting, we're getting bills now that are coming in that aren't being paid. We need to do something. He said he'd have it ready. And then we talked again, he said, well, he wasn't sure since we have a, we might have a conflict, so he doesn't sure if I was going to join as a plaintiff or a party defendant. I didn't care, just get it done. I told my client that if it wasn't done within two weeks, I would have, I would do something on my own. My secretary found it necessary to go to her daughter who was having a baby in North Carolina, so she left for a week. My client got upset and says, hey, we got to do something, it's getting worse, she asked for the hearing. I'm here on her behalf because she asked for the hearing. That's how the circle, so to speak, and it's still our intention. The matter is definitely going to have to go to Circuit Court. There's issues that, with all due respect, this commission can't handle. But we think that the situation is getting worse, not better. And that we need, we need a replacement on the executor to find out what's going on with funds that should be left, and why bills aren't being paid that need to be paid.
Response?
Well, he's not correct. There's, the bills are being paid, there's nothing done otherwise. The, in the closing we have for the property, the money was escrowed out. Larry wasn't even paid. Heard his client's son did some of the work, and he didn't get paid. So I mean, it's what's going on, and in our response, as I said, we asked another fiduciary commissioner to be appointed, because obviously the one we had made a decision based on nothing.
Okay, that'd be a separate motion when considered. You're making that request today?
I made that request to my response, yes.
You want to add anything?
No, Your Honor, other than to say that we are working on this. Like Mr. Kupac said, there may be some issues that we're trying to iron out before we actually file in the Circuit Court, but we intend to do that very soon.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
I just have one question, I just want to get really clear now, Mrs. Straffus. You were saying that this decision by the fiduciary was made without ever having a meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I hear it, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. My, uh... Let me ask one more question, just clarifying. Mr. Rogers represents who?
We represent, Denton Warren Scholl represents Tony Moore, Heather Kearns, John Catharino, Joanne Nagy, and John Marvin Haynes, who are the beneficiaries of this estate other than Mr. Kupac's client.
And I understand that by your representation, you don't oppose the removal, but you didn't join the removal?
That's correct, we believe all of our issues have to go to Circuit Court.
And that's where you are? That's where you are, in Circuit Court?
Yes, yes.
My, my, my feeling is the, based on the report of the fiduciary commissioner, Mr. Haynes has met all the requirements that we had ordered in terms of completing the reportings, and I don't know if we actually did an official order, and we had an agreement, I don't, doesn't really matter. But according to her report, he has completed all the annual accountings and met all the standards for all the requirements that were laid out. The objections and problems and the things that were discussed that are classified as wrong by the petitioner, and maybe even some of the others that are not part of the petition alleging, are the kind of things that the fiduciary commissioner in their hearing will hear and make evidentiary findings, and then make recommendations on those evidentiary findings. It is not Mr. Haynes's or any personal representative responsibility to set up a hearing to hear allegations made against that person representative. It's the person who's making the allegation against the person representative set up the hearing, and based on the very report that the fiduciary commissioner here, it was that failure that resulted in not having a hearing. Not anything that the fiduci, the executor did in this case. I would move that we deny the petition for removal of the executor at this time.
I second that.
I have a motion seconded and further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We need to address this other issue.
I personally feel that maybe getting a separate fiduciary agent to do it and hear it, because that's what we've been wanting, and I don't, I don't understand why, and I'm not going to judge why they made that decision, but I think a new party to look at it, because it's going to be in court, and we can't answer those questions, like you said, that's with the fiduciary agent. I would like, is that a possibility? That's what you've, may I ask?
I'd like to put some sort of timeframe on this. Let's get to, I mean, this is what really brought the petition, you can read it, you can read, I've been around long enough to know what that's what the petition's about, is really things aren't moving, and it's not getting done to people's satisfaction, there gets frustration. So I would like to say that that we appoint a different fiduciary commissioner, so someone can look at this fresh and new. Not any allusions to the primary whatsoever, just we want someone fresh and new to look at this, number one. And that a hearing will be held within ninety days, or all the issues will be in Circuit Court, which will allow the fiduciary commissioner to suspend any hearing necessary here that the Circuit Court's going to deal with. That doesn't mean that it suspends all the fiduciaries. Does that, does that make sense? You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's fine.
Are any new pleadings necessary, or will the new fiduciary commissioner get everything from the old fiduciary commissioner?
New pleadings are necessary. I don't believe in people spending money over and over again for the same thing, so all the, the previous fiduciary commissioner, all the files and pleadings will be transferred to the new fiduciary commissioner, and all necessary is, a date will, a date will be requested for the actual hearing. But I don't want to order a hearing if the fiduciary commissioner's just going to sit there and say, well, I can't deal with any of this because all of it's in Circuit Court. That's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to say, but if there's issues that are not in Circuit Court, the fiduciary commissioner's supposed to go ahead and have the hearing in ninety days. Does that make sense?
I'll also move that, because I strongly agree with that.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Any other issues before us we need to deal with?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much, good luck to you all.
Thank you.
Hopefully you can get it worked out. That's a good solution.
Tell Josh I said hi, I hope he's enjoying his vacation. Mr. Kupac, take care of yourself.
Thank you, nice meeting you, President.
Nice meeting you. Okay, it's past ten thirty-five, we got objections filed to the annual counting of the Jesse J. Statler estate. Any parties here, okay, please identify yourself.
Representing Mr. Statler.
Okay, is he present?
He is, right there.
Okay, please have a seat. And who else, identify yourselves.
This is Kevin Shamblin, he's the current executor. Michelle Bechtel.
And Michelle, and?
Jacques Williams, I'm your fiduciary.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Wes, you're the representative for the petitioner on this?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Okay, you have the floor.
J.J. Statler died April the fourteenth, two thousand. This is a sixteen-year-old estate. I represent Allen Statler, who along with Mark Gans, was one of the two specific legatees in the will. There are assets within the will that have been held by the current executor undistributed to the appropriate legatees. No accounting had been filed since two thousand and seven. I filed a motion to compel those accountings, which the fiduciary commissioner made known to the administrator, and accountings were filed, but filed inadequately, without vouchers and appropriate things. That's the current status of the case, however, Mr. Shamblin is represented by Michelle Bechtel, quite competent attorney that I trust very well here in Morgantown. And she has assured me, and she's given me preliminary data, that she will need thirty days to adequately file a complete, detailed accounting from day one, which would show where the assets are, what had been done with them. And I learned that part of those has even been transferred to the auditor of the dormant account, that the administrator took no action, and they were transferred to the council, so she's in the process of getting that back. So she needs time to do that, so I trust that she will be able to comply with my request to file appropriate accounting within thirty days. She can speak to that, and I'll defer to her, but I have no objection to that request.
Okay, basically, as Mr. Matheny said, the last thing we're waiting on is the money back from the auditor. They sent us a letter last week saying they were aware of these proceedings today, and they would just like, as part of your order from today, acknowledging Mr. Shamblin's continuing as the administrator of this estate. And they will, they have everything they need, and they will promptly send us the money back. That is the final missing piece to, can do a final accounting of all this. I shared a draft with Mr. Matheny. I think he has a good understanding as to where we are right now, so I would just ask that an order from today reflect that he continues as the administrator, and that I have thirty days to finalize the accounting. The other issue sort of hanging out there is, he, Mr. Statler was married at the time of his death, and Nina had, his?
And on both very well. My father was an auctioneer and a close friend of J.J.'s.
Well, she has, you know, the right to elective share of this estate, and she, this is, as Wes said, sixteen years in the making. We thought at one time she filed a waiver, we cannot locate it. I've asked her to execute another one, I'm not sure she's confident. So that's kind of the missing thing hanging out there right now. So that's something that could crop up. She did, she received notice of this hearing, I believe.
I can speak to that.
Okay, great.
Good.
I have nothing else to say, no.
Jacques?
Yes, Commissioners, there are other interested parties. Nina Statler chiefly. I think a, a good position could be taken that she has waived, because there was to have been a hearing a number of years ago concerning her elective share. I don't have the entire file with me, but only the most recent developments, and I wrote to her indicating to the effect that if she desired to have a hearing on her elective share, we would schedule one, not hearing anything that hearing, which I think I had gone ahead and scheduled, was not conducted, it was not followed through on, so that I think there's certainly been conduct that would be compatible with the elective share having been waived. But I've been in contact with her by writing to the last known address, I have a P.O. box in Pinterest. Approximately a week ago, I received a communication from Sam Statler, her son, to the effect that he was assisting his mother with handling affairs, so I got his address too, and I'm writing to both Nina Statler, as far as future developments would be concerned, and to Mr. Sam Statler on her behalf, at an address that he gave me. And then another possible interested party would be Attorney Jeffrey Taylor from Fairmont, who, as I recall, was, had made an appearance and was prosecuting a claim a number of years ago on behalf of a healthcare provider. And I've informed Mr. Taylor of this proceeding and the fact that there have been developments, so I think the, the record should reflect that in addition to those who were present, there are at least those two other interested parties, Ms. Statler and Attorney Taylor on behalf of his clients. I don't have anything to add, of course, I welcome the progress that has been announced, and the time scheduled, it's been announced by Mr. Matheny and Ms. Bechtel, that it'd be good to get things moving in a direction where they can be concluded by fall's end, if not summer's end for that matter.
And of course, any carrying on any of these issues, you're sort of holding, waiting for this accounting, I assume?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Point number one is, I believe it takes affirmative action by the wife to trigger a spousal share, and that's never been done in sixteen years, so I believe it's been de facto waived. Secondly, Mr. Taylor was aware of this hearing, should be here, and I think that's de facto waived. And I would reserve all my objections pending the final accounting in this case and review thereof.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Since the petition objections contain no, I don't believe it contained any motion to remove. We really don't need a motion to, to confirm. We could, however, have a motion to, to set the thirty days as part of an order of this commission.
We would ask that that be done, and we have no objection to Mr. Shamblin remaining, I think he has a duty to remain and answer to the last sixteen years, so we don't want him removed, we want the answers, and we would ask that you set a hearing within thirty days.
You want to set a hearing, or do you just want us to set that, that a, the, the accounting will be submitted to you within thirty days, and then you can set the hearing if it's not to your satisfaction, or you can set the hearing directly with the fiduciary commissioners, then we don't have to come back here?
We can review the accounting within thirty days, if we need another hearing, we'll ask for it.
Okay, that sounds great. How about that for a motion, I think?
Yeah, that's it.
Are you rejecting the accountings that were filed?
Well, there has been no accounting filed since two thousand and seven.
Well, no, I did file.
They filed them, but they were inadequate, the accountings.
Oh, okay.
He says they were inadequate, the only income and expenses were dividends earned by an investment account and management fees.
Make it clear for me. What, what are you, what are you going to do in thirty days?
I'm going to do a final, a final accounting, it'll close the estate, yes.
All right, the, okay, now, now, now I got it, all right. It's the final accounting that you're, you're promising to sort of wrap things up, rather than going back and fixing up all these individuals?
Do you want to approve these accountings?
No.
Just, yeah, just move to have a final accounting within thirty days.
That being a motion, I would second. I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Is that anything else before us? Okay, thank you.
Hopefully we won't see you, but.
That's all right, Michelle, she can go back, she can find it all, all right?
Yeah, find the money.
Good seeing you, Michelle, take care.
Thank you.
Wes, Jacques, take care.
Now, we've got one more, yeah, yeah, just about.
Okay. All right. The next issue is the estate of William Franklin Perry. The General Counsel for the West Virginia Ethics Commission, Kim Weber, had filed a motion to, to request the sheriff, is he still here? Yep, there he is. The sheriff of the county take control of this estate and complete this estate, given that no one has filed.
Do you want to get the petition on?
Yes, please, let's, that's right, we, we granted her the right to attend by phone. Is anyone? Is anyone, anyone else here in the matter of the estate of William Franklin Perry? Nope, that's okay.
I can be blocked.
Hi, this is Kim Weber. She's supposed to be available for a conference call with the Montague County Commission regarding her petition on the William Franklin Perry estate. It was supposed to be at ten thirty. She's not in at all?
Thank you for saying that now. Appreciate it.
Yes, last week. It's Renetta. Number four, MCC, L U R.
This will be three.
Well, we're in the middle of commission meeting where we're calling her for a hearing right now. If she calls the commission back, that they will, they will come get us. Three oh four, two nine, two nine one, seven two five seven. Yes, ma'am. We may be adjourned by the time she calls back. Okay, thank you.
Gotta get off the beach.
I think she may be working from home today.
Okay, all right, well, let's just, let's just move on. And if she calls back, fine. If not, then she's gonna have to reapply, as far as I'm concerned. The petition has vacated itself. This is, she has not been available a couple times, and that's enough. New business, discussion of revisions to the general county fund budget. You want to give us a briefing, Renetta?
Well, you've got two, two papers in front of you. Right now, the, the carryover stands at two million, six fifteen, six oh three. We had discussed last week at, during staff reports, different scenarios. And I think I've worked up two, two options. I would recommend option one, but if you want to do option two, that's, that's your prerogative. We're adding some money to contingencies and financial stabilization, courthouse, and then various amounts for money that we held back from the outside agencies last fiscal year.
Just to bring everyone up to current, we, we did a, in January, we did a holdback on distribution of coal severance budgeted money, because we knew there was a shortage in coal severance funds, and the only way to do that was to do a holdback. I know a lot of people referred to it as a cut, but it really wasn't intended as a cut. It was, coal severance, we're totally dependent on the state. They either send us a check or they don't send us a check. I mean, we have, until we get the check, we have no idea exactly how much that check is going to be. Two things we did and said at the time, and I'll let the other Commissioners speak to this as well, was that this was a holdback, that we realized that there most likely would be a shortage, which there was. And even though we had our, what, twenty-three thousand dollar carryover increase, I mean, it's nowhere near the two hundred thousand plus dollars we lost in the overall budget. In addition to that, I talked to all the, we talked to, to all the elected officials during the budgeting process, and asked them to hold back as much as possible, or reserve as much as possible, and spend things on essential, anything they could hold back would be welcome, because there were a number of agencies that, that we recognized that it would create a hardship on. And we've met with different agencies in the interim. We've talked to them about their hardships and the difficulties. And that I explained to the elected officials that once we saw our carryover in, both for the coal severance and the general fund, that this one time, this one year, given the circumstances, we would attempt to fill those gaps created by the loss of coal severance to the outside agencies. Option one that she is referring to is basically addressing that. I got to praise every elected official and every department head. There's, that really, really did recognize the situation and helped us through, through this, this situation. I mean, I can't, I can't speak more highly about our department heads and our other elected officials. They, they really understand and they work with us. I, I just came back from the National Association of Counties Conference, and we are extremely fortunate in Montague County, working together, committed in our direction together, and our cooperation. There's so many other counties through the state and throughout the United States, that they're at odds on a constant basis, attacking one another, destroying, more, more interested in embarrassing someone than they are of serving the people. And the horror stories are, which, which I know probably everyone in here has heard, is really bad. So we are very, very fortunate, and I, I want to reaffirm my praise and my respect for all the elected officials and department heads that worked so hard to, to keep track of this budget. We had a, we had projected a carryover of four million dollars in the general fund, and we had a two million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and three dollar carryover above that four million dollars, for a total of six million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, six oh three. So these are the funds that have to be assigned. And option one is to fill all the, fill all those shortfalls and increase the budgets. One of the things that we, we cut in our efforts, and I'm not gonna revisit everything we've done in, in terms of, of reassigning government, government duties, government responsibility, public services versus individual, private, or not private, but nonprofit entities. I'm not gonna go through all that again. I've gone through that a number of times. But we did, we did cut my, the arts, what's the name?
Art Mon.
Row Brooks?
Art Mon.
The Arts Mon.
Mon Arts Center.
We, we did cut that substantially in the budget this year. We really didn't increase it back to the level this year. But I, I believe we might want to, the way this is assigned in alternative one, we have funds in which, if there are special arts projects and stuff, we've been, we've been, that's part of our revision, is we're looking at special projects and specific grants for special projects. So this alternative one does have that flexibility in it as, and not, not only Montague Arts Center, but in any entity that has specific projects, we have the flexibility in here to, to address those, both by the increase, increasing our contingencies by five hundred thousand, and restoring our financial stabilization. When I first came on, that was the big one I was after, was to make sure we had the financial stabilization fund funded, and we'll be able to increase that to seven seventy-one. So, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with alternative one under those different auspices that I've discussed. Commissioner Bloom, do you have anything you would like to add on that?
I'm torn, I mean, I, I agree. Option one is clearly the best option, and that's probably what I'll vote for. I mean, we're looking at possibly, including two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fill the needs that we, you know, we didn't have. My only concern is, but, but you've just assured me in your, in your comments that it is a one-year situation, and that I think that people need to understand, this money, though, was not taken from coal severance, because there isn't coal severance. It's the county, due to all the different things of the million dollars that we cut from the budget, from the other individuals helping us get to that, that we're, we're providing that for one time. So I understand, as long as we do it this one time, and then from now on out, coal severance will only pay for the coal severance functions. I, I could agree with this, and I think it's also a reward to the community that helped pass our levies, that also gave us a little bit of a flexibility to do that, too. So I, I agree. I would only go with option one, as long as, as you stated in the motion, that we would have it for just this one year only.
With that being said, I would so move that we adopt option one. Please understand that the two that we did not, that were the, were the transcendent library who did get levy funding. So I feel that this is, I feel really comfortable doing this, because I feel that this portrays the commission as an individual body of its word and its integrity.
And I'll second, I agree with that.
I have a motion and second any further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for your work on that as well, Renetta. I know you played with numbers a lot of different ways.
Thank you.
Go ahead and transfer, and she's on the phone.
Okay.
Okay, she arrived.
Need to get her out of the pile.
Yes, Ms. Weber?
Yes, hello.
Hi, this is Ellen Callan, President of County Commission. Commissioner Ed Hawkins is present, and Commissioner Tom Bloom is also present. We were hearing your petition to appoint the sheriff as administrator of the William Franklin Perry estate. You had filed a petition pointing out that it's been more than two months, it's been quite longer than that, but more than two months have elapsed without there being a personal representative appointed, and that you requested the sheriff of the Montague County be appointed to take possession of the estate and administer the, the estate. We've read your petition and all. Would you just, for the record, would you just please identify yourself and just briefly state your petition?
Yes, sir. My name is Kim Weber, General Counsel for the West Virginia Ethics Commission, and we filed a petition because we're a creditor of Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry was respondent, and I explained that went to a public hearing, and as a result, Mr. Perry was ordered to pay a fine and court cost. And that is, that is the nature of what he owes us, and it's there in the petition, the amount.
That's fine.
And therefore, because the estate has not been opened, and it's statute in chapter forty-four of the code, we ask that the sheriff be appointed to administer the estate for the primary purpose of paying the ethics commission instead.
Yep. Okay, that's, that's very good. I would just point out, since you're on the phone, there, the family was notified of this hearing. They did receive notice. Any potential applicants to this, to administer this estate were sent notice, and no one is present. So what's, what's the wishes of the commission, or, well, first should I ask, does either Commissioner have any questions?
I have no questions.
No.
I'm ready to make the motion before your sheriff.
I second.
I have a motion and second any further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Your petition is granted. The sheriff is sitting here, and he, he's anxiously awaiting to take this charge, I can tell.
Does this give us one, does this give us one freebie with the Ethics Commission when we have a question?
Only Commissioner Bloom would ask that question. Ms. Weber, is there anything further you need for us today?
Uh, no, sir. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure the sheriff will have it wrapped up in no time. Thank you, Ms. Weber.
You're welcome.
Okay, bye now.
Bye-bye, thanks.
Is that the wait button? Okay. No, okay. Okay, all right. Got that one taken care of. There's a note for an executive session. Do we need an executive session, something?
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
I'm sorry, I've been out of town for the last week. Okay.
Reports before there.
Yeah. Okay, we already did reports from elected officials, right? Okay. Reports from county commissioners.
I'm gonna start this time.
Okay.
I, I've been at National Association of Counties this past week. It is, it is, the, the things that are being at the, being done at the federal level that can help counties is really tremendous. Everything from mental health, I mean, we've got a mental health bill, but we've really got to get the, get our, and, and I happy, I didn't recognize you, you were at...
Senator Manchin's office.
Yeah, Senator Manchin's office, but Rob, is it?
Justin.
Justin, I'm sorry. Before I finish, go ahead and identify yourself, you're...
I'm Justin Ram, Senator Manchin's office.
Okay.
North Central Route.
You wanna bring us some...
I don't have anything.
Enlightening words or something like that?
I just came to make my rounds. That money?
So glad to have you, Justin. Sorry, I...
Oh, you're fine. I started late.
That's all right. There, there's a Mental Health Act that will make, will really help in a lot of different ways that, that is coming before the Senate, and I, I know we'll be chiming in on that and be passing information on to our senators that can really help both from the perspective of, of the way we treat the mentally healthy. Many times, we put them in jail because we don't know what else to do with them. So I'm excited about that. There's, there's transportation, transportation bill which recently passed. We've got great opportunities here, especially in Montague County and this region of West Virginia. Workforce, I am, I'm not making an official announcement, because we will be having a ceremony at this, but as you know, I've been county commission's appointed to the Region Six Workforce Commission, which consists of thirteen counties. And I've been president of that Region Six Workforce elected official body for the last four years. We, we were selected, Region Six Workforce, West Virginia was selected as the model workforce regional agency by the National Association of Counties. Barbara De Mary, I have not had a chance to call her yet, but we will be having a ceremony in Marion County recognizing her and her staff's great work. So there were a lot of good things. My flight turned out that I didn't get in till two thirty last night. I actually overslept, but I still got up at six twenty-two. The old time, not the new time. It was nine twenty-two, but I made it in anyway. I have a number of other listed things that I know have been working on in legislation that's pending, that I will brief at a later meeting, and we'll go over both in work session and regular meeting, because we, we really are making some headways at, at the national level, as the National Association of Counties repeatedly says, and I say. The solutions for Washington, D.C. and the federal level, and the solutions for Charleston and the West Virginia level exist in the counties. Our new president is from Leon County, Florida. And I can't, can't help but repeat what he had to say. had to say, in that he is often asked, uh, are you, when are you looking forward to higher office? And his response, and as our new president of NACO, is that there is no higher office than a county elected official. That is the highest office, because that is the office where you deal with the everyday matters of people's lives, from what I call the front door and backyard issues, whether their children are safe, whether they, whether they, uh, whether the children go out back and play safe, whether they can play in their backyard without any, and get those necessary things, whether they can safely walk down the street and go to school and come home, whether people have jobs or not, workforce. So it was an exceptional time. I want to thank both of the commissioners for your support and encouragement that I go out and fight for, for things that, that we all want to accomplish, both at the national as well as the state level. So I thank you all for the opportunity. I've got a lot of work, and I got, actually, I had to put another bag together to get all my documents back, but, uh, it was, it was, it was meetings, meetings, and more meetings, and a great opportunity to, to meet and talk with other commissioners and county leaders throughout the country, and I will be sharing with you more in the future.
Well, we have the county fair coming up first, a nice one.
You want the fair?
Fair, I guess. He deserves a fair first.
That's okay. Again, thank you for your service, Alvin. You know, it is great that the national recognition that you achieved is recognized, I think, and well deserved. That's, you know, that's no, you did a favor for me and represented and reported at the fireman's meeting that I was unable to attend from Alvin's behalf. I did represent commission at the unveiling of the Don Knodt statue on Saturday. It was very hot, but true to form, yes, I did wear a jacket in time. Okay, it is a great thing. If you want to go up and see it, I think that it just adds to our downtown. So Jamie Lester did an excellent job. Monday, the Solid Waste Authority had a meeting. They did have a presentation by Downstream Strategy. This is a draft of a report of the evaluation of waste-to-energy options for Montague County. Okay, Ben was there, and he did write a short article on it. Monday, of course, August 1st is the fair parade, so I'd like to see everybody come out for the fair parade, and particularly to view Henry Rufus Hawkins, rescue dog. He will be in the parade, driven by his human. He does everything but drive the car. Okay? And Tuesday, of course, August 2nd, the fair will begin, and that's at Myland Park. So I think this is a great community event. I encourage you all to come out and enjoy the times with the rest of the community. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
A couple quick issues. First, I agree with Ed. I want to congratulate our president. I think it's very important that he represents us, and when you think about counties, everyone thinks of large cities and forgets about the smaller counties, which really makes up the backbone of the country. And I appreciate you going there and representing us in a real positive, because it makes it a lot easier when we ask for things, and people say, oh, you're from Mon County, so at least we have the recognition. Second thing I just want to hand out, this is a just draft of a brochure, which is the Mon County Rails to Trails. Every three years, we redo it, so I just want you to know, there's just some new things, and I just wanted you to, it will be color-coded, but I just wanted to show you that, so you get an idea. We are continually moving forward in the Rails to Trails, as we're calling it, of North Central West Virginia. So just wanted you to have a copy of that. The second thing is, I am gonna ask, I've been asked by a number of the people in the Western End, that I did receive a notice of a hearing, so I will publicly read the hearing. It is in the Circuit Court of Mon County, Division Number Three, State of West Virginia versus Delma Walls, Notice of Probation Status Hearing. The defendant and his counsel are hereby notified of a probation status hearing now, scheduled on August 22nd, 2016, at 11 o'clock before the Honorable Phil Gajo. At the status hearing, the state will make recommendations regarding the defendant's probation, depending upon the progress toward meeting the requirements of his probation. I know a lot of people are asking what was going on. I just wanted to officially do that. And I want to end up on a pos, real positive note. This letter was a letter to the editor today by Kerry Woods, and I know the three of us, and even before that bill, we had always hoped, and our vision was, that one day when we would build this stadium, that this team would be a part of the community. And I think this letter just sums it up. Its championship mentality extends beyond field. I won't read the whole thing. I just want to read the last two paragraphs. It's, as I said, it's from Kerry Woods, whose son tore his ACL. They are season ticket holders, and what this group did with the Black Bears to accommodate him and his family and everyone, but it reads, "The Black Bears have been a true blessing to Morgantown. They have provided wholesome entertainment for people of all ages. Most importantly, though, the Black Bears' move to Morgantown has blessed our community with many exceptional people. The Black Bears are champions on the diamond, but as an organization, the championship mentality goes far beyond the field of play." And I know the three of us have been wanting a group that would go in and be a part of the community, and they have, and I really want to congratulate them and Matt Drayer for this, and I thought they deserved to get that recognition.
Indeed.
And that's it.
Absolutely. That's, that's really fantastic.
Yes.
That was in the paper today.
That in the paper today.
I've got six days of paper to get caught up, find out what happened, what happened in here. Okay, Renetta, Bobby, you all have anything? Anything further? Okay, we got exactly the same. Do you have any idea how long it might be?
They've asked for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, no more than a half hour, I would assume.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, let's take a...
Move to go in executive session, pursuant 6-9A-4B9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. We're, we're in executive session. We'll go as quickly as possible. We hopefully, well, we won 30 minutes.
Move to go out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you.